This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the RSU 67 Board of Directors. This meeting is live streaming. It is Wednesday, October 1st, and I call this meeting to order. Rose, would you please call a roll? Here?
Here.
Here. Would you all stand with me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in Before we begin our regular meeting, due to the numerous concerns being expressed and the large number of guests present this evening, I'd like to make the following statement. We do hear you, and we want you to have the opportunity to voice your concerns. The first part of tonight's agenda will be to allow the board to do the regular board business. The end of the meeting will be for public comment. Please sign the consent sheet in order to be eligible to speak. The sheets are found on the table at the back of the room. There will be no time limit for speakers this evening, no time limit. We respectfully ask that you allow local residents to speak first. Please keep your remarks respectful, and please refrain from using names or any profanity. We welcome your comments and want everyone who wishes to speak to have the opportunity to do so. Thank you, and we'll now go on with our regular meeting. Mr. Downing, have we adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am, there are no adjustments. Sorry, I have a delay on the agenda. We're adding item K4, which is JLCD-E, which is Permission to Administer Medications in School. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve for September 17th, 2025, school board minutes as written. May I have a motion? It has been moved and seconded to approve the school board minutes. Is the discussion. Hearing none, we will move to vote. All of those in favor? The motion has been carried. Thank you. Communication, Mr. Alston. Committee reports. Policy Committee, Mrs. Lambert.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Burke. We met Tuesday, 9/23/25 at 5:00 p.m. We had four policies brought forward by the school nurse, Jerry Davis, that we went over. First one was JLCB, Immunization of Learners, which is going to go for first reading later this meeting. We also had JLCDB, Administration of Niloxone Hydrochloride, and that didn't have any changes, so it was reviewed. The third one, JLCD, Administering Medication to Learners, that was going, that's going to first reading. We had, we had to actually do a pretty much whole rewrite on that one. We went with the MSMA policy. And then the last one is JLCDE, Permission to Administer Medications in School, and that will be going for first reading tonight. We did go over the policy committee duties and felt that we need to try to work better as a group and going over the policies and bringing, you know, going through policies to bring them to the board, you know, in front of the board. Our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, October 8th, at 5 o'clock in the MA library, and we will be going over the cell phone policy discussion, not necessarily bringing any, bringing any policy to, you know, to the board, just a discussion, and anyone interested that has, you know, preferences on cellphone use, please attend that meeting. And we adjourned at 5:38 that evening.
Thank you. Now, may we have the Region 3 report, Mrs. Lambert?
Yes, thank you. We met Wednesday, 9/24/25. We approved the first reading of policy JKAA, Use of Physical Restraint, and JKAR, Procedures of Physical Restraint and Seclusion. We also approved the tallies of Education Operating Budget, the Adult Education Budget, and the Capital Equipment Loop Reserve for Region 3 that evening unanimously. The Report of the Director. We have had a place for bottles to be donated, and they turned those in, and for Skills USA, we got $2,144 to go towards the Report of the Dean of Students. Currently, we have 216 students enrolled. They have been having ongoing job fair visits, and also they were visited from Northern Maine Community College, Eastern Maine Community College, and Washington County Community College. Also, army recruiters have been visiting. And that was the end of the meeting.
This board is blessed to have two student representatives, and they will be giving their report at this time. They speak for other students and usually have very interesting reports to give us. So I will ask the senior rep to begin this evening, and that is Jake Hansen.
Thank you. So we have a new junior representative, Gray Freeman, and she was just chosen a few days ago. And our two graduated student representatives from the past two years, Catherine, who was the senior representative last year, she's moved into UMaine and is doing well, and she's currently double majoring in Political Science and Elementary Education. And Payson, who was our senior representative two years ago, is in his second year at USM, and he's now living in Portland and is continuing as a music major. And Fall sports are well underway, with boys soccer currently at 3 to 6, led by all-time MA-leading goal scorer Max Fitch. The girls are currently at three wins, two losses, and three ties, with their homecoming game tomorrow night. Football is currently at 2 to 2, with their homecoming game this Friday, and the theme is blackout. Field hockey has their homecoming game against Central, which looks promising. Players and coaches say that it's the best team they've had in years. Golf will be heading to PVCs this week where they can qualify for states, and cross country is doing well. We are in the middle of homecoming week at MA. The spirit days are Jersey Day, Twin Day, Pink Day, Dja Ma Day, and Class Color Day. Senior class has completed their annual cookie dough fundraiser for prom and the class trip. Seniors have made over $3,500 to use for prom and class trip. Class officers have been chosen, and the senior class officers have begun planning for Festival of Trees, prom, and class trip. Juniors and seniors went to the college fair at the University of Maine, and 45 students were able to visit over 70 colleges from across New England. NHS applications are now closed. New members should be chosen and will be handed out roses, per tradition, in the next couple of weeks. And I'll hand it over to our junior student representative.
Thank you, Trey. And our junior representative, Gray Freeman.
Thank you. The Junior High also has fall sports underway, and now students have the option to do fall cheering, which is new this year. Seventh graders are going to the annual overnight KIA leadership school on October 1st through October 3rd, and eighth graders will be volunteering at the Burlington Food Pantry on distribution days. The Elbow Bar had their fire prevention week from the 6th to the 10th. Their school book fair, also from the 6th to the 10th, after school from 4:00 p.m., and additionally on Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. They also have their math and literacy night, the 5:00 to 6:30. Overall, a great start to the school year. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Moving on, I have several reports to make this evening. The fuel bids have been received by the district, and this is for 20,000 gallons of fuel. There were four bids received. They ranged in price from $2.76 to $2.63. The lowest bid was awarded to C.N. Brown for $2.63 per gallon. I have received official notification of the resignation of Andrew Penaro as an RSU 67 Board Director, and we thank Mr. Penaro for his service to this board. On October 23rd and 24th will be the 52nd MSMA Fall Conference. That's held in Augusta each year, and there will be six of these board members attending. This is an excellent opportunity for networking, and there are many clinics held with various topics, anything from new legislation to budgeting to school safety, many other topics. Now, we also need this evening to elect a delegate to the delegate assembly. This is an opportunity for each school district to send a delegate to vote on new resolutions, bylaws of the Maine State School Board Association. It's going to be held virtually this year on Saturday, October 18th, and it will begin at 9:30 a.m. And I would like to have a volunteer from this board and also an alternate too, so that if the volunteer who would be an elected representative is unable to do this via Zoom, there would be an alternate in her place. Do I have a volunteer from this board to be, to be our representative? Thank you, Becky. Do we have an alternate? Thank you both very much. And I have the delegate package of proposed resolutions, and see me after the meeting, and I will give you your package. Moving on, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Downing.
I have a statement that I would like to make, and that is that we are all well aware of the community's concerns, and we are working to respond to them in accordance with Maine law and the board's policy and collective bargaining agreements. To that end, the board will be scheduling a special executive session at its next board meeting on October 15th, 2025, to address these concerns. They have been duly noted, and they will be addressed on October 25th, excuse me, October 15th, 2025. That's why I wear two pairs of glasses. So.
All right. We move on to new business. Oh, pardon me, old business. Mattinacook Junior High School Student Handbook.
The rationale why it's on old business is that back in September, in August, when we were adopting the handbooks, the Junior High handbook was requested to have a page that had the list of employees on it. That has been done, and also about the cell phone policy for the board vote that evening was put into the handbook as well. Both have been done, as requested.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, I will entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to nominate Ron Weatherby as Mattinacook Academy math teacher for the 25, 26th school year. May I have a motion? It has been moved and seconded. Is the discussion. Hearing none, we will move to vote. All of those in favor? And the motion is carried. I will now entertain a motion to accept the policy committee's recommendation to approve the first reading of policy JLCB, Immunization of Students. May I have a motion? Is the discussion. Hearing none, we will vote. All of those in favor? And the motion is carried unanimously. I will now entertain a motion to accept the policy committee's recommendation to approve the first reading of policy JLCD, Administering Medication to Students. May I have a motion? Is the discussion. Hearing? Mary?
Just a minor change. This one says administering medication to learners.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just to be consistent with the other policies, have students instead of learners?
Yes. Yes.
And I did have a question on that one, because somewhere it says JLCDB, and this just says JLCD on the top of it. Oh, is it true?
I didn't catch what you said. Can you repeat that, Mary?
Excuse me?
Can you repeat that question?
But this, this one on here, it says JLCB, I mean JLCDB, and this that we have doesn't say B on it, so I didn't know if that mattered.
The JLCDB was the niloxone administration?
Oh, that's the one.
And we did not have to change that, so it doesn't have to come for first reading.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will move to vote. All of those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. I will now entertain a motion to accept the policy committee's recommendation to approve the first reading of policy JLCD-E, Permission to Administer Medication in School.
Shall move. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is the discussion.
I do want to mention on this one that the only thing we had to remove was Dr. Carl Strout's school at the, at the head end. Everything else was the same.
If there is no further discussion, we'll move to vote. All of those in favor? Opposed? And the motion is carried unanimously. Under announcements, the policy committee will meet on Wednesday, October 8th, at 5:00 p.m., and we will be meeting in the library. The next school board meeting is Wednesday, October 15th, at 6:30 p.m. And the operations committee meeting will be Tuesday, October 21st, at 4:00 p.m. And it is now time for public comment. I believe, I don't think I have all the sheets. If there are more on the back table that have not been turned in to me, would one of the offices bring them to me, please? And I would ask that you come to the podium to speak and to introduce yourself and tell us which town you are from. William Davis.
Is this him? Yeah. I just have a couple of quick comments about the last meeting. I thought it was a disaster. I was really glad to see as many people from the public show up as did, but due to the actions of really particularly one person with a little assistance from one or two others, the meeting was badly disrupted, and you didn't get to finish all of, you know, of your own work. So I think I'm all in favor of public statements and public access to this group, and I wish there was more, and I'm glad there's more actually tonight, I'm surprised. The change, actually putting it last is interesting, because if the meeting explodes, you've already done your business. That's interesting. The five minute, or the three, the no time limit, that scares me a bit, because I think our friend from Southern Maine at the last minute meeting would have been thrilled to take a half an hour to tell us how we ought to do these things. And the gentleman who was speaking on behalf of Lyndon LaRouche, whose name I had not heard in the last 30 years, and who died in 2019, I think, I suspect also would have been happy to go on for a half an hour. It also would seem to me, I don't know what the law is for your policies, but it seems to me if someone really disrupts a meeting, you call it back to order and tell him that if it happens again, he will be ejected from the meeting. Now, again, I've been told that that's not legal by state law, but that's just word on the street. There was, and the guy who destroyed the meeting last time wasn't local. He was from Southern Maine, and apparently he has a long habit of doing this. And it turns out there were some people in town who were expecting him and who knew he was going to show up. And the Lyndon LaRouche guy, I have no idea. I mean, he took up time on a subject that had nothing to do with the school board or with RSU 67, and it would seem to me that something in the policy ought to say that if the public speaker starts veering off into things that are irrelevant, he should be silenced and asked to sit down, you know, ideally. I guess that's all. Oh, on the board member who resigned. I think that's unfortunate. I was sitting right near him, and I could see his anger gradually grow during the meeting. But he was directly, personally, at close physical contact harassed by the guy from Southern Maine, and he didn't respond well to that, but he was, well, I think that's, I think that was unfortunate, but, you know, you do what you have to do with your policies. That's all I had to say.
I'm Bill Brady from Lincoln. I happen to currently have two daughters and a son currently in this school system. First off, MetLife, I ask that you give my condolences and apologies to our student rep. Last time when I interrupted the meeting, I did not mean to silence our young students' voices. It was unfortunate. I do feel, at the same time, I was able to provide the youth and education. Our voices were being silenced at the meeting. Many of us felt that that was uncalled for. Many of us felt we weren't part of our freedom of speech. Some of the same thing that myself and other gentlemen and other ladies in the audience have signed on dotted lines, provide for this country. We felt it was being neglected and abused on us and not given the chance to speak. We felt it was being neglected and abused on us and not given a chance to speak, especially after a president's was set for during a meeting. I felt somebody needed to stand up and say something, therefore I did. I came up and addressed something. Unfortunately, it did result, the fact that I was escorted out, I knew that was going to happen, they knew it was going to happen, but I still came up and said what had to be said. On behalf of what had happened and expired in September, as a parent here, one of my major first concerns, when I heard everything that was going on, obviously I had multiple concerns. One of the situations that I think which I was real concerned to, I understood why the facility locked the doors. I'm not going to deny it. Our lovely officers that are back here in the pack would all testify, I'm one of the parents who wanted to keep out that day. I know it, they know it. I 100% agree what was done was correct. My problem with the way one of those, that situation was handled though, that should have been addressed, I came to pick up my child along with plenty of other parents. Nobody was signing our kids out. I just went, recently just went through a nasty divorce. What if I wasn't supposed to have my kid? We're talking about teenagers getting a chance to step out of high school. Do you think many of these teenagers want to take a chance even if their dad's only supposed to get them on the weekend, or if mom was only supposed to have them, or say Grammy and uncle, or grandpa or uncle showed up to get them, they're not going to jump out that door the first chance they got and then, you know, go off and run around on the street without being supervised? That, I think, is a security issue that definitely needs to be addressed and looked into in the future. I'm not saying like there was a problem, I didn't have a problem. I thank the staff that did everything, you know, I called ahead, said I was coming to get my kid, didn't have a problem there. The incident that caused all that, I do have, as many parents were expressing the last time, a big problem with that. We expect our educators to be in a basic education for our children, doing whatever, whether it's math, history, social studies, English, or a foreign language, or even at the Vokes School or Regent, sorry, learning those special skills. We don't ask educators, and educators aren't supposed to be giving their personal opinions on political matters, their personal opinions on sexual matters, sexual orientation, or anything like that. I feel that situation, I understand Superintendent, I feel you have my empathy and sympathy, but this has been two months almost. As an adult who's had to deal with both sides of this, if this was a student, if another student had heard a student say the same things, that student would have already been expelled. Some of us have had kids that have already had a similar situation that has happened here. As adults, you had that situation happen at your work, you would have been fired. Why it's taken two months to get some sort of result or some answer to the parents and concerned citizens of this town, especially being, we love this town, but our elementary school is right next door. When the public has given the opinion that an educator has caused enough of those situations that their judgment and their character is of question, and our elementary school's next door, you're going to cause bigger scenes by allowing educators and faculty that are allowed to do that without representation and without paying consequences for it. There are many of us that have talked about what we felt and how we felt that was unjust, and there are processes and plans to fix some of that. You know, there's an election coming up in November, there's other ways that some of the citizens and parents have gotten together, interforming and talking about other things to handle. I think it's very simple. We expect the school board to stand up for our students, to provide the education that we as parents were granted when we were kids. And when we look at where our school system is currently in the state and in the country, it's, it's pretty shameful considering, you know, how many of us adults are out there every day working, trying to provide for our families and expecting that the teachers or the education and the staff here are being properly trained and being provided the same training. There shouldn't be preferences of certain things allowed in the classrooms, you know, an unpublished comic book that parents have in our possession from that classroom, photos that were taken of that classroom, there's a flag that is not the American flag, stuffed animals from a male teacher in a high school. You don't, this is irate, like how does this happen in a public high school? You know, like we have kids, when all this is going on, it took until about two weeks after this happened before my daughter told me more of what actually she had seen. Because she had tested, she told me, she told other staff and she talked to other students. She said, I can't tell my dad. My dad's going to come to that school and flip out. She knows her dad. I don't, I don't, I've never hid who I am. I'm very blunt and I'm very upfront. What has happened here, what this school system has allowed to happen, needs to stop. If the school board doesn't do it, there are parents like myself that are going to find every way that we can around the system, like getting other people in on election and recalling those who have been sitting on this board too long and aren't taking justice. We will, as parents, stand together and start uniting and taking care of and protecting our kids. If you guys won't do the job, we're going to do it. So stand on notice, and this is notice for all board members current and in the future. Enough of us parents are paying attention and we're getting damn tired of it. There's a freedom of speech problem that was adjusted the last time we had a meeting. Granted, I agree with the previous person, some of the actions and some of the comments made by the previous person last time, they were all uncalled for. Unfortunately, that gentleman also had the loudest voice in the room and was saying what many of the parents who were sitting back weren't saying, but we all felt and wanted to say. Unfortunately, sometimes it takes a greasy wheel to get the attention. I think the school board's got the attention now, the public's got the attention. This school board meeting, the previous meeting, it's hit the news, it's hit Facebook, it's hit all over. This is no longer being a hidden little secret in the school. This is public nationwide, statewide problem. And it needs to be addressed and we need a lot more conversation from the board to the parents. Mr. Superintendent, I'm addressing that more to you. And we need something faster. You know, we're trying to teach kids in education, what are you providing to these kids by doing this? You're telling these kids that have complained about one of the staff members for the past couple of years that their voices don't matter. When female students complain to another staff member that they feel uncomfortable about a teacher and nothing's done to address it, eventually you're going to do, it's going to come around full circle, those kids come up in society and then what do they do? They don't want to say nothing. They become another crowd that sits back as sheep and says, let's not do this, you know, let's talk about this. It's like plenty of talk has been done with homeschooling. I thought about it. I've also said now, I can't do it. I refuse to do it. To me, homeschooling is just passing the buck off to the rest of the parents back here. I'm not going to do that. I'll be here every time I can, right in everybody's face, as a loud voice saying, it's going to stop one way or the other. If we can't get the board to do it, then the parents and the community will band together and we will get it done. With that, I say, thank you.
Hello, I'm Steve Olson. Appreciate the opportunity to speak and not to beat a dead horse, but I think that obviously that last meeting turned into pretty vile stuff. None of you should be attacked personally for what you're doing. As I said in last meeting, I think you all have great intentions, I think you're all well intentioned. None of you should have to deal with name-calling or being personally attacked. It's a bad example for our kids too on how we want to handle issues and solve problems in our community, that's not the way to do it. I am sad to see that Andy has resigned. I think he also stood up for you and rightfully so. Unfortunately, not in the most legal way, but I think he was right to stand up for what's right and sad to see him go. With that, I think over time it's easy to get complacent. It's easy to go through the motions as a board, as an organization, as a community even, when it comes to handling, you know, issues in general, especially when it comes to education and programs. When things are done for so long and there's such a rigid system in place, I think it's pretty easy to just not question it and let time go by. And I think that's unfortunately what's happened here and many other schools around the state. And I think it's unfortunate because in the beginning of the meeting, we all stand up and pledge allegiance to a pretty beautiful flag that represents the basically limitless opportunities that our country can offer us. We all have an amazing ability to create anything we want and hundreds of thousands of people lay down their lives for that opportunity. I think being in this point of time to allow a school to have declined to the point that it has is an incredible disgrace to those people who have laid down their lives. I don't blame each one of you individually. Again, I think you're all well intentioned, but something has to radically change. And I mean in a big way. I mean, these are, these are people's lives that are being worse off because they're getting a worse education than others. That's a crime. It can be done better and it requires out of the box thinking and it requires collaboration and really taking risks. And like I said last time, if the result of having, you know, twice or even three times a school budget required to have the results we want to see, fine. I'm happy to pay three times as much if I know that my kids can come to a school where they'll be the best people that they can possibly be because that's what it's here for. That's my personal opinion. If some of you on this board don't think that you have what it takes to have radical change, I respectfully ask for you to step down. And it's not personal. This is for my kids who I homeschool and I'm afraid to have go to this school. I want them to have friends, I want them to be able to learn alongside those friends and to see them every day of the week. But this is one of the worst school districts in the state. Why would I do that? I ask, please, that you have some introspection and really think to yourself, if you cannot carry on the task of radical change in the school, please consider stepping down and allowing others to come up and to take your place. Thank you very much.
All right, it became violent. I'm going to kind of go off on your mission statement that you sent to us about the R S U 67 rooted in the shared agreement of creating a positive, respectful, and supportive environment for every student. The situation that happened just a short time ago that apparently everyone hears where what took place. Just like to say, where's the positivity when a teacher is glad and tells the class that someone who gets shot and killed deserved it? Where's the respect for the feelings of the students who may be unsettled about any shooting? Where's the supportive environment when a teacher tells the classroom that he'd like to kill his own father? And to top it all off, to mention anything about school shootings in this day and age? Shame. Really. The R S U's commitment to the positive, respectful, and supportive environment for every student, it's talk like this, this should send up a red flag to each and every one of us. And this particular teacher has no business being around any of our students or children.
My name is Heather Severance. Currently reside in Lincoln and I have two children in R S U 67. As a parent, I want what's best for my children and for every student in our district. I pay attention to the conversations happening about our schools. Too often though, those conversations seem to focus only on the negatives. While I believe it's important to raise concerns and hold leadership accountable, I also believe it's just as important to recognize and celebrate the many positives that don't always make the headlines. We are fortunate to have teachers who go above and beyond every single day, staff and administrators who work tirelessly to make sure classrooms are safe and welcoming, and students who amaze us with their achievements in academics, sports, the arts, and community service. These successes deserve to be celebrated right alongside the challenges in our district. This fall has already brought so many moments of school spirit, achievement, and community connection that remind me why I am actually proud to be part of this district. Homecoming week success. Students and staff participation in theme days has been fantastic, I've heard, leading up to a spirited pep rally that'll be held Friday and Friday night's pinkout game in honor of breast cancer awareness. The football team celebrated a big win on the road. Our athletes, fans, and lovingly known as Bleacher Creachers, filled the stands in Belfast and the energy from the crowd helped bring home a victory on their homecoming night. Fall sports are in full spring, full swing. Teams across the district are giving it their all and community support at homecoming games has been inspiring for all the athletes. The arts are thriving. Students are already hard at work preparing this year's musical Sister Act, which will take the stage in November. I can't wait to see the talent our kids will share with the community. This morning, our seventh graders left for their annual three-day leadership camp, a tradition that helps them grow in confidence, teamwork, and independence. These are just a few examples of the positive momentum happening right now that I could come up with. Of course, our district, we're not without issues. Constructive criticism is necessary if we want to keep improving, but if we only focus on the problems, we miss out on celebrating the dedication, spirit, and accomplishments of our students and staff. As parents, community members, and families, we owe it to our children to hold space for both. Honest dialogue about what needs fixing and genuine recognition of the good that is already happening. A balanced conversation will serve our kids and our schools far better than constant negativity ever could. Our schools are not defined by their challenges, they are defined by their people, by the teachers who care, the students who work hard, and the families who support them, and the community that comes together to cheer them on. Let's keep showing up. Fill the stands at the games, pack the cafeteria for the musical, volunteer if and when you can, share the good news as proudly as we voice our concerns. When we balance accountability with encouragement, we do nothing but strengthen our schools, lift up our students, and remind everyone that this community believes in our kids. My daughter, who's in the audience tonight, and all other children in this district are listening, they see the example that we as adults are setting. Let's make it a good one.
My name is Joseph DiBentino. I live in Massillon Field. And I'll start by thanking all of you for participating in this school district and being the great school board members you are. The first thing I wanted to address as a student in AME is that I walk those halls every day and I live in those classrooms. And I see my principals working hard and the IT department doing their job and I love it here. I transferred from Howland looking for a better life and I found it. So when hate and discrimination comes into the safe place that I have found in this school, it really hurts me. Whether it be a flag in a classroom or the color of your skin, nobody should be discriminated for their beliefs or how they feel. And getting allegations of things that may not be true, as in because you don't like this person, because they have a flag in their room, et cetera, it's, it's not fair just to, just to, you know, really try to get somebody fired, you know, a teacher to, just to, you know, really try to get somebody fired, you know, a teacher that I like, I look up to, to be discriminated for reasons that aren't actually what they are. And I respect everybody's beliefs, and I appreciate people voicing their opinions on it, but I don't think, you know, yelling at school board members or being disrespectful is going to be anything but not helpful. So once again, I thank you all, and I hope that discrimination and hate doesn't take over this wonderful school.